Welcome to the Hampden Town Council Meeting for February 18th, 2014. Filling in for Carol Dupre, the mayor, she's out tonight. First thing we'll do is the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First item tonight is the consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions or comments on the consent agenda?
Yes, I'd like to oppose 3A and 4D as in Delta.
4D, Bill?
Yes.
Anybody else? Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda except for items 3A and 3D?
I move that we accept the consent agenda except for those mentioned items.
Second.
All approved. Okay. All right, so consent agenda, item 3A, Bill?
Yes, I know we've, we're very, I don't know, you want to call it generous to the good, one is the Goodwill Ride a Snowmobile Club. And we lease them that facility for a dollar a year, and they take very good care of it. My question, and they've sent us a nice thank you letter here for our $1,000 donation to them, and the town manager has told us, year after year, that that comes from the registrations of the snowmobiles. And my question for the town manager is, do the registrations equal $1,000, or is it more, or less, or how does that work?
The town's income from snowmobile registration fees is nearly $3,000 a year. The town returns $1,000 of that to the snowmobile club for the fact that they do all the grooming of the trails and that kind of thing for the year.
Now, does that registration go into our general fund, or to the state, or how does that work?
The town's fees from registering snowmobiles are nearly $3,000. I don't have the exact number, it's just under $3,000 a year. And those are fees, a portion of what people pay to register their snowmobile, that's the amount that stays with the town. The balance of that money, that snowmobile registration, goes to the general fund to help offset taxation.
It does. Okay, thank you. And they keep excellent, I see them all the time doing their trails. That's good.
Yeah, I would also point out that it's not just snowmobilers who benefit from those trails, but those of us who hike in the woods with our dogs benefit from the trails, as do people who hunt in the woods and use the trails.
Good, thank you. The other one is 4D, which has to do with the Laura Hoyt Pool. And they sent a up-to-date memo to the town. Reading it, I just want clarification from the town manager. Says the annual giving campaign, which they have been running, I don't know if that's just for this year, or in general, I know they were trying to raise some money through donations. Says so far is $1,060 so far. Darcy, who runs the pool, submitted invoice for $1,704 from snowmen printing, and it says for the remainder of the balance for the mass mailing. I'm just a little bit shocked or surprised. So they've only raised $1,060. Is that for this year, or is that total? So, do you know?
That is since the mailing went out. That's this year, and it's a recent event. So there, the last, last year, if you'll remember, when they did the, actually it was two years ago, they did a campaign, and they raised over $16,000 to contribute towards the cost of the air handlers. That was their last campaign. This one's just started. But the cost from snowmen's included, includes the printing and the mailing of them, the postage cost of that.
So is expectations probably that they'll get a lot more than that, like they did before, hopefully?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, we had, we had asked them to try and cover more of the cost of their operations, which as you'll notice, what the pool director has told them that this would be used for, which is maintenance and upkeep of the facility, so that they can continue to do that.
All right, okay, thank you. I'll make a motion to accept those two consent agendas that I polled.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, the next item is item B, public comments. This time, anybody in the public that would like to speak on anything that's not on this agenda has a chance to speak. And just for the record, can you state your name and where you live, please?
I will. Scott Carter, 1088 Western Avenue, Hampden. I just want to talk about something that I see happening in these meetings. Most people don't recognize it for what it really is. They see it as just bickering and fighting between people that have opposing views. I recognize it for what it really is, as do a lot of others, who are from what I like to call the political generation. We are fully immersed in politics, have been to numerous political meetings, and maybe even held public office in the past, or currently. What is going on in these committee meetings and council meetings is a well-known strategy called shock politics. You've probably seen this tactic used before. For example, at protests where violence breaks out, or more recently, we all witnessed the Occupy Wall Street incidents. This strategy is usually used when a small group finds themselves out of power. The strategy is used to shock and intimidate people into silence or inaction. Let me give you just a couple of examples of shock politics being used recently in committee meetings and council meetings here in Hampden. As I'm sure people watching this at home have witnessed, in the past two council meetings, it is almost impossible for the new mayor to even finish a sentence without being rudely interrupted, berated, and bullied. This is meant to disrupt, confuse, and intimidate. Something that you can't see at home are the shock politics tactics that are being used in the committee meetings, because they are not televised. In one meeting, a former mayor who has, who was having nothing short of a meltdown, was escorted out of the building by another counselor while she screamed profanities and slammed doors. Sadly, in the committee meeting on February 4th, their tactics turned violent. One of the council members who was part of this disgruntled small group brought his wife to the meeting, and she tried to physically attack a citizen who was on the committee. Luckily, she did not reach the citizen before being restrained. The desired effect of these shock politics tactics is to stop good people from attending meetings and speaking up. It works for an initial period of time until people see it for what it really is. And then the tide turns against those employing the strategy, especially in such a politically savvy town like Hampden. Having seen this shock politics strategy tried many times, I can tell you that the end result is always the same. The perpetrators are exposed for what they really are, clearer heads prevail, the system we have in place works, and the bullies are voted out. Remember, nobody likes a bully. In closing, I would encourage the good men and women on this council to not be afraid and intimidated. Don't be distracted by all the huffing and puffing and roaring, because that's just what it is. Stay focused on the task at hand, the job you've been called to do, to make the town of Hampden a great place to live for all. You might have noticed I didn't mention the counselors specifically, who are engaging in these shocking tactics. I think we all know who they are. But if you don't know, just watch the beginning of the council meetings, and notice who does not honor our flag with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you.
Could you give Denise a copy of that, since you wrote it into the record, or email her one so she can have it?
Is...
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Okay, this time, public comments closed. Policy agenda, there's no nominations, elections, unfinished business, the Public Works Department report. And due to some prior commitments, the Public Works Director could not make it tonight, so he's going to have to reschedule that. So, item B, reappointment of council districts, redistricting committee recommendation. The state, since we had the census, has said that the town has to get the districts within a certain percentage of each other, otherwise we give up the right for our districts, we go to straight at large. So, the town council put together a committee to work on it. There was two proposals. One was by Denise from the town office, the other was by a citizen on the committee, Paul Filbrick. They were discussed at a meeting. The general consensus was, is to keep the plan the way it is up here, to keep four districts. As you can see on the wall, the changes, the old information is on the left, the new is on the right. The other plan had five districts, and the council thought at this time it would be easier to keep it at four. So at this point, that explains that. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak? No public comment? Then do we have a motion from anybody on the council?
I'll make, well, go ahead, you want to...
I motion that we accept the findings of the redistricting committee and move forward the recommendations.
Of Denise's plan?
Go for referendum.
To go to referendum of Denise's...
That's the committee, yeah. It will still have to go to referendum.
Yes, I know, but that's, yeah.
Right.
That's what he's, yeah.
Is there any other council comments regarding this?
Oh, wait, you need a second first.
Well, I thought that's what you did, but okay.
Okay.
Any comments?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment on that. I was, I would like to see that, hopefully at some time that we can put this back into committee again, to look at five districts. I think the, having five district counselors lowers the number of people that they can represent, give them better representation. I understand, and I voted in favor of the current plan, simply because of the fact that the timeframe, it needs to be done. But I do think that we can stay with, if we could put something together and come back to go to five districts, I think that would behoove us in the future. I'd also like to publicly comment that I want to give high recommendation to, or I shouldn't say recommendation, but commend Paul Filbrick. Out of all of us who were there, he was the only one that went to any effort to put anything together on his own time. And, and I think that was very beneficial, that he was willing to do that and set back, and at least have a second plan, even though it wasn't looked at too much. But I would hope that in the future, we could, we could take a look at this and move to five districts, and perhaps have five, five councils from districts and two at large.
Any other comments? So the motion is to accept the district change, is according to the draft on the wall by Denise. All in favor?
The next thing that will happen with this, it will be, it will be converted to an ordinance, which will be on a council agenda, and a public hearing will be held on this plan that's being put forward by the council. Once that public hearing has been held, and the council either affirms its decision or changes it, if it affirms it, then this would go to referendum in June.
Thank you. Next item is Penobscot Valley Refuge Disposal District, and I'm going to ask the town manager to explain that first.
Approximately a year ago, the town was notified that an organization that it once belonged to back in the 80s, the Penobscot Valley Refuge Disposal District, that funds left in the treasury of that district had been appropriated by Eastern Main Development Corporation in the amount of $50,000 and spent. And the communities who had been part of that district and who had contributed that money protested that action. And with the assistance from the legal counsel, from the municipal review committee, who provided that at no cost, the towns involved reconstituted the disposal district by sending members and petitioned to get the money back. And eventually, the money was returned. This item before the council, that the finance committee made a recommendation on earlier, includes dissolving the organization and distributing the funds that are in it according to a formula, which reimburses the community for the amount left in the treasury of that based on population. And the finance committee recommended that the council approve this authorization to get back the funds that had been contributed by the town, lo, many years ago, prior to the establishment of PERC and the incinerator, when the town was looking at what its solid waste disposal options were. So the town would be receiving under this $3,340.06.
With that being said, is there any public comment? No questions? Okay. Do we have a recommendation from the council?
I would move that we accept the money.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay. Item D, video streaming and taping of committee meetings, services committee recommendation.
Can I interrupt for one second?
Sure.
I just got a text message saying, the video is working here, but the audio is not. Can we just double check?
My light's on, but...
Well, we can hear here, but I'm just wondering, are we...
How does it look to you, Denise, over there?
I don't have anything.
Oh, okay.
That would be in...
Can I go check, just to make sure that we're broadcasting out the audio?
Why not?
Could just be the streaming.
No, the streaming out to the public is not working.
Okay.
The picture is, but the voice is not.
All right.
That's what's happening.
But the cable is working. The cable is working, or just the streaming, the TV?
Yeah, cable's working, but the streaming, the picture is working, but not the audio.
So we'll have a...
All right.
And he has no idea why.
Yeah, well, then we'll keep moving along, and he'll keep working on it.
But we will have a DVD, and we will be streaming and rebroadcast with the audio.
Okay.
So it's just...
So, back to the video streaming, it was brought up that some people requested that committee meetings be videoed. And we brought that to the services committee, was for discussion. The motion was, one motion was to leave it as it is, with no video or no taping. And then there was another motion recommended, that it be just audiotaped and no video. So we have two motions that were brought forward by the services committee.
Deputy Mayor, I'm sorry. Can I make a motion that we table this out of respect for Mayor Dupre until she returns, so we can have a conversation with her involved?
We can, but her motion was that she wanted it livestreamed, and...
And she participated in the discussion.
She was at that meeting. Huh? Excuse me? We'll get the public comment. Oh. So, that's the way it stood coming out of services. So, at this point, we'll open it up for public comment. Does anybody in the public have anything to say?
So, but the motion to table, does that, that doesn't have any discussion?
There was no second. No second.
Okay, all right.
So at this point, what is the thought for the council?
We have two motions, which were somewhat in conflict.
Two recommendations.
Two recommendations that came out of the committee that were somewhat in conflict. And there was some discussion that continued after the second motion. And I think, and I think this vote will reflect it, that there was a consensus that came out of the committee. But I do want to break it down into two motions, because Counselor McPike brought up the fact that a lot of people have difficulty hearing what's going on in council sessions and in committee meetings. And that we take some steps, whether with microphones that operate at the center of the table, or better quality microphones, or whatever, you know, to make sure that that's addressed. And I know there is some effort being put in this, but I would like to carry forward from the service committee, a motion to the council, that we make an effort to improve the sound for people who are hearing impaired at both council meetings and committee meetings. Is that... Yeah?
That would be a separate item.
Yeah, that's, that's just one, one item.
Right.
And then we'll go on to the next one, because there are two.
So you're going to make that a motion?
Yeah, I did make that a motion.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay. Did you want to make that a motion?
No, no, no.
Was I too long-winded?
All in favor?
Okay.
Or should we discuss?
We probably should discuss it, sorry. And could you repeat that motion again, please?
Okay. The services committee would like to recommend to council that we make a special effort to improve the sound quality at both council and committee meetings, with special consideration to people who are hearing impaired. That's been seconded.
I guess my question is, is that according to my short time period on here, there's a set of rules that we go by, and I think number D says we're talking about video streaming and taping of committee meetings, and not improving the sound.
Right. Your, the motion that is in the package that goes with this, which was made by you, and seconded by Counselor Brand, was to recommend to the council that steps be taken to ensure that all those attending meetings can hear what is being said, and leave the committee record-keeping as it is. Right? So I'm modifying that to take the last little bit out of it, because I think there is a consensus that we'd like an audio record of committee meetings.
Any other discussion?
I'm not sure about that split, and the implication isn't there. I mean, basically, we're talking about the one that said leave things as they are, and the recommend, we should discuss the recommendation that came from the committee, not subsections of it.
Okay. I'll make, I'll take exactly the recommendation, and we'll have a vote on it, and then we'll vote on the second recommendation. Okay? So, the committee would recommend to council that steps be taken to ensure that all those attending meetings can hear what is being said, and leave the committee meeting record-keeping as it is. Is there a second?
Second.
Well, what do you mean, keep the record-keeping as it is?
That means no additional recording of any committee meetings. That was the motion you made, Mr. McPike.
Correct.
So we had a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, we do have, we do have hearing impaired equipment, and I guess what really is necessary is to verify that it's functioning as the council had originally intended when we purchased it. If there's a, if there's a problem with microphone systems and hearing impaired equipment for the council meetings, then we need to address those. And, and so I'm, that's why I'm in favor of this going forward, and really taking a close look. But beware, to do an adequate job of handling the microphone system and the sound system we see which is not working tonight, is liable to be expensive.
So I guess I'll, well, go ahead, Jean.
Yeah, I can, I can vote for this, because it's in conflict with the upcoming motion, and because it says, leave the committee meeting record-keeping as it is. And I believe having an audio record of the committee meetings would be a good thing.
Right.
So I can't vote for this.
Well, my opinion is, is I think we need to audiotape the committee meetings, because lately, we've had a lot of issues, and in the past, of things coming out, that somebody said this, or somebody said that. And this way, it protects both parties. We have a record of everything that was said, so it'll eliminate a lot of problems that have arrived that necessarily may not have. So, my recommendation was for the audiotaping only, and at that point, I think, you know, we need to make it so people can hear. So obviously, we need to be working on the audio. Bill?
I agree that we should make it so people can hear, and I do not disagree with the ADA, hearing impaired, if there is an issue there. However, I do not agree with taping committee meetings, and the reason is, I believe it's going to restrict the flexibility of citizens coming up and making comments. I don't think they would, a lot of them would want to if they know they're being taped. Second of all, my other problem is the legality of issues that may arise out of us taping a council meeting, and then that's going to be an official tape, which is fine. However, I believe Sue, and she can speak for herself here in a minute, mentioned about the fact that individuals can take those tapes, and they can edit those tapes, and then put them on whatever they want. Bits and pieces, parts of here, parts of statements, to misconstrue what was really said. For instance, although they wouldn't be put on YouTube probably, but I had an individual put something on YouTube about me and the American flag, and that's my right not to pledge allegiance if I don't want to. And I made a statement as such. However, they put on, because I said I thought it was ludicrous for the council to do the pledge allegiance. They put on there that I thought the pledge allegiance was ludicrous. See? That's what people can do, and I never said any such thing. So what I'm saying is, they can mislead the public on purpose, if they want to. And that's why I'm against taping. So Sue can speak for herself.
I think, just to add...
Well, we'll let Sue go, and then...
A record of the meeting that's taped is the record of the meeting that's taped. If the town has a recorder there, and somebody wants a copy of that, they're free to have that. that. We're not in control of it once it leaves the building, but the town's record, should anyone listen to it, come to the town, listen to it, is what it is. It's not...we provide lots of copies of DVDs of meetings. What people do with those after they leave here, we're not in control of that, and we can't be. People can upload them to YouTube or do anything they want to with them, but the only thing we do is maintain an official record. And I can tell you from my viewpoint of trying to do minutes for these things, who said what when they said it? I, I can't write fast enough to keep up with all of it, and sometimes, we have to get the flavor of the discussion as well as the motions would be a lot easier. The same way before we ever did video, we've always had an audiotape of every council meeting. We always had audiotapes back in the, back in the day before we even did this. So I, I think that the idea that it would somehow prevent that's not true, because it was discussed at the meeting. You can have ten tape recorders sitting here with people in an audience, and that's not an official record of anything. That, that doesn't guarantee that the town has some thing that was recorded that said this is what actually happened. And I, I think the town would be better protected to have its own tape created at the time of a meeting, that if anyone wanted a copy, they could get it. People can, and some have in the past, brought their own recorders and recorded things, you know, so...and that's perfectly legal to do, but while that's going on, I think the town ought to have its own tape of the...it would make it easier in reviewing what occurred when people start saying, "I, I didn't say that," or "I did say that," or whatever, if I had something to look at or listen to that, you know, made it easier.
Counselor Royce?
Exactly what she said. I just think to have an official copy, and I hear what you're saying, Counselor Shakespeare, but to have official copies so we wouldn't have to worry. It's official, and if anybody were to take anything out of context, we have that to play back. I think it's a nice, it's a good compromise to go from video streaming to just recording. I think some of the apprehension of people coming up is the fact they're on camera, but if they're sitting around the table, there's a recorder there, you know, it's, it's not gonna be noticeable, and I think people would be more comfortable, probably not as comfortable if they, if they weren't being recorded at all, but I think it's important for us to have an official recording. Just my personal opinion.
As, as my opinion, as long as there's only one recording, the town's recording. I mean, the public can record if they want, but, uh, from their own person, but there was a lot of discussion about putting tape recorders on the table, you know, per...no, I, I don't think you're saying that at all, Sue, right?
Right.
Just the town's tape recorder.
Bill? I mean, Tom, sorry.
Yeah, don't change my, change my name. I think, it's fine if people wanna, if you want to keep an audiotape, don't really care. But I think we, I think we need to follow some other stand, more standardized procedures if we're going to do this, in that the only legal binding activities that come out of other of the meeting are motions made and actions taken. And I think we should restrict our minutes, our formally recorded, written minutes that get distributed to the public and become part of our packets, to those items. And if we're gonna have an audiotape, and someone's concerned of what went on in the meeting, they can come in, sit down, listen to the audiotape. I don't like the idea of having editing taking place in a discussion, and then people take that discussion and try and imply that it was part of a motion when it wasn't. We've already had some confusion tonight with what is a motion, what is not, and what is a recommendation for the committee and what is not. And so I think we ought to shorten our minutes down to just actions taken, uh, motions made, actions taken, in terms of written minutes. And I also need, think we need to have those minutes come back to the committee before they air to the general public, so that, because, and it's called for that to actually be done in our, our rules and in town charter, that the, the minutes be made available to the public after they have been approved by the committee. Because there have been a number of times when, when minutes, where we're commenting on what went on in a, in a committee meeting, and, and again, it, it's a, it's a loose verbal repeat of, of what's one person says went on in the, in the meeting, and, and it gets a, it sometimes gets a little bit loose. And I think the committee should have an opportunity to take a close look at the motions that were made and the, and the actions that were taken, and who voted in which direction on those actions before they're made generally available to the public. We, we have to, if we're gonna do this, let's take the advantage, uh, let's take this opportunity to clean up our record-keeping in terms of, of committee meetings and council meetings.
Okay, so on a side thing, I should go back to Services?
I would like to withdraw that motion and make the second motion, which I think has support. So the motion I just made, I'd like to withdraw it. Can you withdraw your second, Ivan?
I did second it.
Whoever seconded it.
I, I did, and I don't want to withdraw the second. I think we need to vote on it.
Well, I'm just trying to say that what Tom has said, I think needs to go back to Services to get that cleaned up, fires the minutes. That's-
That's not fair.
That's not part of what we're gonna-
That's, that's not Service. That would be Administration or the, or the council in general.
All right, but I think it needs to go back to a committee to get that-
Fine.
-on there and, and cleaned up the way we want it. So we have a motion and a second to leave it the way it is, correct?
Yeah.
So are we ready to vote on that?
Well, to leave it the way, you mean to tape record.
To do nothing?
No, nothing, nothing.
Not, to do nothing in committee meetings.
Okay.
Ready? Okay. All in favor?
To leave it the way it is.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. One, two, two.
Two, four. Four against.
So-
You have to say against.
Do I have another motion?
Against. Against.
Yeah, well, I have to tell them. Four against. Two, four.
It's obvious, but you've gotta say it. You gotta do the vote.
Yeah.
All right, so let's vote again.
No, you just have to say against. You already did the four.
I just said four against, two, four.
Yep.
But you didn't get us, give us a chance to raise our hands and say against.
We may abstain.
We could've abstained or whatever.
Okay. How many against? Four to two.
You're good.
So the motion fails.
But see, you can't abstain. See? You can't abstain unless you notify before we started the subject matter. So you either have to vote for it or against it.
Because you have a conflict or something, you can abstain.
So do we have another motion?
Yes, I would like to make a motion that all committee meetings be audiotaped by the town, and that those audiotapes be made available to citizens upon request.
I would second that. Should we look at, if a citizen wants this, should there be a charge for that, or everyone's, everyone's looking at nickels and dimes, and someone's gonna have to take and put that together, either on a CD or whatever they do? Is there some charge we should put on that?
We charge three dollars for the reproduction of a DVD. I would assume that a tape would be about, it's, it's just our cost for the DVD and the time to do it, so we would do the same.
Was there gonna be a timeframe, Sue? I thought you mentioned something about, is it available right away?
If we-
If you do it?
If we do it, it should be available the next day. It's the tape. It's not, you know, if we have to copy it, it's-
Yeah.
It's a matter of doing that. The same way that when we have a council meeting the next day, Denise's phone rings off the hook, and we make-
Yep.
-DVD after DVD for that, so...
Gotcha.
Yes. I, I just wanna say, um, audiotapes do take a little bit longer time than a DVD, because we have to use this machine and dub it, so...but it's definitely doable.
Any more discussion?
I would just like to let people know that we did discuss videotaping, and that we had an estimated annual cost of $2,000 a year. And I think that cost contributed to some people who were participating in the discussion thinking that maybe audio taping was a better idea than videotaping.
Ready to take a vote? So, all in favor for audiotaping committee meetings? All against? Motion carries. Number four, new business, request to use reserve funds for upgrade to network equipment. Finance and Administration Committee recommendation. In the Finance and Administration meeting, it was recommended to take $1,200 out of reserve account?
Well, before we leave the previous topic, I'd like to, you know, see some kind of action directed to someone to clean up the mech, the minute-keeping process that I mentioned, or not, if that's what the council would rather do. But I think it's open to discussion. I'd like to make a motion that we, well, let's, the admin, the Finance and Administration Committee, since, don't seem to wanna do it now, the Finance and Administration Committee published formal guidelines for the recording and reporting of minutes.
Any discussion on that? Uh, nope. Somebody want to second it, or? Okay. All right, so, back to computer reserve. So it was recommended by the Finance to take $1,200 out of the reserve account to finish the upgrades to the, oh, you know, phone service, internet, and would you like to speak on that, or is that...
At the time that the phone system was bid, we knew that some of our networking capability in this building, and as it turns out, in the other buildings in which the phone system will be located, that there are some hardware pieces that are necessary for this networking to occur, that were not part of the original $1,200 that was au, was authorized, and that an additional, um, I'm sorry, the original $1,800, and initial $1,200 has been requested to use for that purpose. Since it's a reserve account, it requires the council's approval, and I would note that this brings to a total of 3,000, the amount for this networking function, and the reserve currently contains $9,000 that had been an original estimate for it, so it's well within the amount that was estimated. And the reason that it requires council, council authorization, since it's under the expenditure limit allowed without council approval, is because it's from a reserve account.
Any public comment? Do I have a motion to remove $1,200 from the reserve account?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? I don't need to say all opposed, do I? Okay, number four B under new business, the sewer commitment?
Sewer bills went out this past week. It's the first commitment, sewer commitment that's been done since our former sewer utility clerk retired and our new person started. This one's for a commitment of $132,927.56, with a due date of March 12th. Just requires approval by the council in order to give us authority to collect the money.
Anybody got any public comments on that? Do we have a motion?
Yes, I'd make the motion that we, whatever it is you'd like to do.
Commit. Commit this amount for collection.
Commit that amount for collection.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
I'm gonna start this that way to sign, and it should end up at Denise.
Four C under new business, arbitrage and use of proceeds policy. Finance Administration Committee recommendation. I believe it was recommended by the Finance to proceed with this policy. Would you like to explain the policy?
The policy is necessary because the main bond bank has changed their rules for borrowing. The town will be borrowing for sewer project on Route 1A and the refurbishing of two pump stations. And it used to be that once you borrowed the money, you had to certify to the bond bank that you would not use those proceeds to generate a lot of income and use that income for anything. The bond bank has changed its rules, and now the town has to have a policy in place that states that you won't take that money, invest it in something, and use the proceeds, and so that's the purpose of this policy, so that we can complete our bond bank application.
Any public comment? Do I have a motion from the council? Proceed with the policy.
I would move we accept the arbitrage and use of procedures policy.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Ananous? And that ends new business.
And that one's going down and going that way as well. Needs to be signed by the council.
Good. Four D, committee reports. Com, excuse me? Oh, yeah, okay. Services Committee, Jane Wallace?
Um, I think we've discussed what happened at the Services Committee already, so nothing else to report.
Okay, with Counselor Royce, Finance?
Our last planning development meeting was canceled because of weather, so there's no, uh, no committee report.
So Finance, Carol's not here. Services, we meet Monday night.
Infrastructure, we meet.
Infrastructure. Excuse me. And E, Managers' Report?
Which is in the other room. A reminder that, um, the, as I, we just did with the sewer, the sewer bills are due March 12th. We have a little over a month before the second half of property taxes are due, which is the first Wednesday in April. The, and I was interviewed today by Channel 5 in regard to our public works budget and how we were faring for the winter, and fortunately, because we, we budget in really what's a five-year average for overtime use, where our payroll should be fine for the year unless we get an inch of snow every day for the next month and a half, and we're just out all the time, because storms like tonight, which is gonna drop snow, go away, are very easy to clean up and, and take very little overtime, and when they happen during the week, it's even better. When they start on Thursday night and go to Tuesday, then we have a problem. But we're heading into March, not December again, so I think that we're gonna be fine. The only thing that may be an issue may be solved in the foreseeable future, because there's problems with supply in the state, but we are in better shape than many. We have a couple loads more coming and have some on hand, but DOT has very little and is not quite sure where they're going to get it. So that's an issue.
Thank you. Counselor comments? Counselor Royce?
No comments.
Counselor McPike? Counselor Shakespeare?
Yes, I have actually three. First of all, in case the public was watching an individual up at the podium, some of the individuals might have noticed our flag situation, which was moved from behind the council chambers over to there, and just so they know that I do realize that the American flag is on the wrong side of the state flag. Okay? So American flag is, and I, I said this last time, American flag is always on its right. So the, right? Counselor Royce agrees with me, so, no big deal, but they should, should be switched, just so the public knows, in case they're watching. Just a little thing. The other thing is- The other thing is, I'm baffled here. We have a state representative by the name of Brian Dupree, who I thought was duly elected by the citizens of Hamden, Newburgh, and Dixmont to represent our communities in Augusta. We have a letter, an email actually, that was emailed to, I believe, Denise. It says, "From Representative Brian Dupree, it's my intention to gather petition signatures for a charter change that will require live video streaming and recording of all public meetings. Can you please give me the information?" Okay? Now, he sent this to Hamden, to Denise. Now, I don't know, maybe, you know, and I don't want to get into this too deeply, because he is not here, and I would like him to explain this. I could see if perhaps a representative has sent this to every community that he represents to have live video streaming, but I, I do not understand how a state representative has any business getting involved with town council business as a state representative. Now, if he wanted to do it as Brian Dupree, he's got a 100% right to do it, but as a state representative, my feeling it's like code of ethics violation, but may not be. May, I'll let Tom, maybe Tom's got an opinion on this, but I just don't understand what he's doing, getting involved in town video streaming. The other, other thing I have, there was an individual up at the podium tonight talking about a meeting on February 4th that we had about redistricting, and we also received an email from a citizen about that meeting, and I want to respond to that, if I may. I'm appalled by what I heard. It's like a good book of fiction. I don't think Stephen King could have done a better job. First of all, the individual who wrote the email, and the other one that was up there this evening, was not at the meeting, so it's all hearsay. Second, if they had heard a tape of the meeting, there's no way these bizarre statements could have been made. I want to disclose the fact that even though my name and my wife's name were not mentioned here by either individual, I believe we are the ones being talked about in some of these statements. The citizen on the redistricting committee being talked about had apparently been asked by the mayor to serve and had volunteered to do so. Even though he is not a counselor, he was looked upon by the citizens as a public official there to interact with the public, make a decision, and vote. He consequently subjected himself to public criticism. If one is so thin-skinned, one should not be on nor volunteer to be on committees. If he only wanted to be a citizen presenting his ideas, then he should not have volunteered to be on the committee and should have stayed as a citizen presenting his ideas. I have been on this council almost five years, and during that time, I have heard citizens multiple times speaking about their constitutional rights to freedom of speech. It's ironic how these same people who preach about their rights apparently do not feel that other people have the same right under the First Amendment of the Bill of Rights. I could go through these accusations one by one and prove they are nothing but embellishments. No one was verbally threatened or assaulted. If pointing your finger at someone and yelling at them because you're angry is a crime, then almost every citizen who have exercised their constitutional right and expressed their opinion at this town podium would be guilty. My wife had a constitutional right to get out of her chair, to stand up so she could be heard. Have you ever heard the old adage, "Stand up and be heard"? Well, that's what my wife did. Jeremy Jones, a citizen who frequently gets up to this town podium and shakes his finger at us, set in his 10 core guidelines for our town. First and foremost, abide by the United States Constitution in its entirety. That means everyone, and it applies to everyone, all citizens, not just a select few. My wife did not, as this statement accuses her of doing, advance towards this citizen and was not constrained nor pinned down by me. Another gross embellishment. And lastly, there was absolutely no statement by me saying, and I quote the email, "This counselor husband then told this citizen committee member that he was lucky that he, the town counselor, restrained his wife because she was physically coming after him," the citizen committee member. I never made any such statement. It never happened. The bottom line is, this person did not like my wife's opinion, period. It's too bad that a citizen who wants to be involved in town government and express her opinion, even when her opinion is not liked, is subjected to statements which are not true and statements which are twisted and embellished. No citizen of this community or any other should be subjected to fear tactics, threats, and bullying by any group of citizens trying to discourage them from becoming involved. We all have a constitutional right to freedom of speech, period. Thank you.
Counselor Wallace?
No comments.
Counselor Brand?
No comment.
And at this time, I guess the only comment, I hope that now with the audiotaping bill, maybe that will relieve some of these issues. And with that, I would say it's time to end this meeting. Thank you for coming.